Yeah, great.
Let's get started.
So Ed, on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so we're pulling in. And we have separate, we're gonna do that separate.
Okay.
I have one.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 4th, 2018 to order. And also announce that as requested by your meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, I ask you to join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that this evening we entered into executive session. And the result of executive session was we approved the minutes for executive session. And we approved the fire department chief's raise for two percent increase. So, other than that, the other items will be brought back on June 11th, next week. And that's the result of our executive session. Anybody for a weekly briefing? Hi, Amy.
No laughing. Amy Savuski, Conservation Administrator for the town. Just bringing up a PowerPoint presentation, very brief, to share with everybody. The news in conservation is that we have four piping plover chicks who have hatched at Red River Beach on Friday, June 1st. They are locally threatened species, and which means they're likely to become endangered. We are required by state law to go according to their management plan for piping plover protect- protection. Say that a few times. Which the town of Harwich contracts with Mass Audubon to assist with our monitoring. And again, it is required by state fish and wildlife. It's hard to see here, but that is one of our adults in that picture. Next slide, please. So I got a call at about 9:30 in the morning on Friday. And the regulation is that when you have chicks that are hatched, there's up to a 1,000 meter area around them that needs to be closed off to vehicles. That would have essentially closed off the entirety of the Red River Beach parking lot. In consultation with Mass Audubon, as well as with the state, we were able to decrease that to about 400 meters, which keeps the majority of the parking area and the beach open. It's essentially when you drive down Red River Beach where the dunes kind of start. On the right-hand side, there you'll see Jersey barriers there now. Thank you to the Highway Department for being very proactive with that. That block vehicle access. And then in the dune area there, there is also symbolic twine fencing, encouraging people to stay out of the dune area. And that extends almost to the high water line. People can still walk between the fencing and mean high water, all the way to the east end. There's no prohibition against that. And they can use the entirety of, you know, two-thirds of the rest of the beach before the Jersey barriers. We also do have, we're required to prohibit them from going in the parking lot. And if you're familiar with Red River Beach, in the bulkhead, there's little gaps where people can access. Audubon put up about a foot-high silt fence in that area. It's enough so the chicks can't get over, but it's enough so people can still step over. Again, requirement by law to keep them out of the parking areas. So they're due to fledge or fly around July 4th. It takes them 30 days to fledge. And at that time, all the barriers can be removed. I probably went over some of this already, but the town put up Jersey barriers to keep people from going down the east end. They put up symbolic fencing, please stay out. You still may sit and walk on the beach outside those fenced areas. Again, silt fence across the parking lot. It is a violation of state law to disturb the birds. We have to comply with those laws. The police have been notified of this. Because we already have had some vandalism down there. We've had people who have cut the twine on the fencing and removed the silt fence from, there you go, the parking, in front of the parking areas there. So, we just, it's not that long. It's only a couple of weeks by the majority of the summer, you know, July on, we should be golden. We only have one nest. So this picture here just shows you the area that has been cordoned off, if you will. It is the east end. There, where the red line goes across the parking area is where the Jersey barriers are. And that's where the symbolic fencing is, is kind of the red loop there. Leaving room for people to walk at above high water. That's where plovers like to be, is at edges of dune fields. And with any hope, if the plovers kind of stay towards the easternmost part of the east end, we may be able to decrease the amount of restriction that we have there. But that will only be told in time where we, once we find out where the birds are actually going. Can you go back to that last, the other word slide, Jamie? I'm sorry. And lastly, please do your part in helping us protect the threatened species by not disturbing them or the protective measures. Again, it'll only be a few weeks. And if anybody is interested in volunteering to become a monitor, this involves a lot. When we rake the beaches, even the parts of the beach that aren't fenced off, we have to have somebody walking in front of the beach rake. We rake three times a week. And we just can't, between Audubon and us, it's hard to keep up with that. So if people are interested in helping at Red River or other beach areas that may have birds, please be in contact with me.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks.
Chris, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just, I think you did an outstanding job kind of highlighting that. I did go down on Friday and found out a lot about birds and what we need to do. And I just wanted to extend my personal thanks. I thought Richard Barubi and Chris Nickerson from DPW had those Jersey barriers. I think the folks from the Mass Audubon were impressed that we had reacted accordingly. And also Eric Beebe was there, so he can coordinate with lifeguards, once we have lifeguards in that area. I just, just to reemphasize with Amy, you know, we came up with a, they could have been harder on us and said, look, close the beach until July 4th. They were willing to work with us, but we do need the fencing isn't because we want to irritate people with strollers. It's to keep the birds on the beach and not in the parking lot. So if you could step over, we can try to get as much of that beach open as we can and allow for the interaction to occur. But I just wanted to thank the people for coming out. It was kind of short order on, because literally, I guess they hatched that morning and they said, oh, by the way, you have to do this now. So it took a little bit of reaction time to get that done.
Yeah, thank you, Amy, and thank you, DPW, and, you know, thank you, Chris. I know that that, I was in the office when you guys got the call, so, I mean, everybody moved really quickly. That was great, because the last thing we want to do is have to close the whole beach. So hopefully, everybody will abide by everything Amy's just informed us of, and it will be short. Thank you, Amy. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comment and announcements?
Hi, I'm Deb Wilsie, founder of Cape Cod Toy Library. And that's a new nonprofit dedicated to providing accessible educational environments and resources to foster healthy child and family development. So to become an operational as a free community play learning center and educational resource for children and families, as well as for teachers and mental health counselors, your help is needed. To establish this family play learning center in Harwich Port, in the Wolfle Building at 432 Route 28, as a central location to support families in the lower and mid-Cape, the current need is commitments from investors and angel funders to make it possible to purchase and renovate the building. It takes a village, every dollar, every volunteer hour, and every in-kind donation of a toy or book will make this a dream come true for children and families. Call me or email me for more information. I have business cards on the table. Sign up to volunteer or make a donation on our website. Follow us on Facebook. And find us at Chatham's Airport Open House this coming Saturday. And join us for a special event at Cape Cinema Theater, June 20th, also flyers on the back table, for a debut showing of Mr. Rogers documentary film, Won't You Be My Neighbor, as a panel discussion with community experts on how play helps children's social, emotional development and learning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to announce your email so that the people at home?
The email is D E B W at CapeCodToyLibrary.org. And the website is CapeCodToyLibrary.org.
Thank you. Okay, on to the consent agenda.
Tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of minutes, April 2nd and 9th, 2018 executive session. Items B and C are going to be withdrawn. Item D, confirm the reclassification of the library director position. E, approve request by Rose in New England.
What, sorry?
And ever source energy to relocate existing poles within the town's right-of-way. Item F will be taken up under new business. And item G, approve application by Chamber of Commerce for Harwich 5K road race on June 23rd, 2018.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Madam Chair, I note that the approval of minutes for those previous executive session minutes are not in the packet.
It's not in the packet.
So we can't really vote on it, because the public did not get put on notice of it.
Just so that, because it was discussed in executive session, if there was any concern, we can't really have them open. So I think maybe what we'll do is, or what I would suggest to the board is, you vote them and then the next meeting just acknowledge that they're available for people.
Okay. Do you want to? So move, you are, right, he's seconded. So discussion?
Can I amend it to remove item A then?
Yes, yes. So it's amended to remove?
I move to remove item A from the.
Second your amendment.
Thank you. Okay, discussion? Larry?
Don, will you just explain why we removed B and C for the public?
Yeah, I met with the town clerk today. There's a flaw in the Harwich Republican Town Committee's list that will be corrected for the next meeting. So the correct list will be available. And C, there was a resignation on the Treasure Chest Committee, but as far as we could find out from both the front office and the clerk, the person who resigned did not create a vacancy, because that person was not an active appointed member last year. So they're still full up. And there is no room to appoint anybody yet.
Thank you.
Discussion on anything else on the consent agenda? Ed?
Nope.
Michael?
No.
We have to do the amendment first.
Okay, do the amendment.
You'll vote on the amendment.
All right, let's vote on the amendment.
Aye.
Aye. Well, we had.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, no further discussion?
No, may I vote on the main motion?
As amended.
All right, so.
Vote on it as amended.
It's already been made, so.
The motion's been made, I'll second it.
No, he made it as amended.
It's as amended.
Right.
So for this, the only thing that's being acted upon is item D, E, and G.
Right.
Under the consent agenda.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Can I just ask who made the motion?
When you made, you moved the motion when you read the consent agenda.
I just read it, I didn't move it.
Don amended it.
Because.
He said, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
No, I just read it.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, because I, you know, I was, would have had to recuse myself from the first item, so.
Okay, all right. So why don't you remake your motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as pertains to D, E, and G. Second.
Any further discussion? Take a vote. Larry?
Aye. You don't have to pull.
I don't?
Oh, in favor.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're in your executive session mode.
And just a comment, I think the way that this has worked, Ed, is that you read the consent agenda as a motion. And you can abstain from that, or separate that as a, so that we don't have to go back through and make a motion after it gets read.
Okay.
Here we are.
So now.
New business.
New business. Treasure Chest sticker parking.
Julie, do you want to just take up F, because it was in the consent agenda?
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, thank you. So the approved, the award of the contract for the Brooks Library exterior restoration to Campbell Construction Group LLC for the sum of $698,500 will be revisited on the next meeting on the 11th of June, because we did not have a full amount of information in our packet. Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so the public understands, I mean, what we'd be looking for with regard to that bid abstract that would have the results of all bidders, a review by the finance director, a review by our lawyer as to form. I noticed that there wasn't a prevailing wage schedule in the contract as it stood. So we can resolve all those things, but it shouldn't be acted on tonight, absent those.
Those things went out in the bid packet, that's not part of the contract.
But we sign it, and we would have to see it.
Sign?
It's our signature that goes on the contract.
Right, right.
So we have the, right, so you're looking for the bid packet, I'm sorry, the bid results. There was only one bidder, as I indicated.
Exactly.
So I think that we were hoping to kind of simplify that, because of one bidder, but we didn't articulate that.
I wrote that in an email, that wasn't included.
And then finance director.
And legal counsel.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that finance and legal had reviewed. So it's no fault of yours.
If I, if I may too, you know, just going, going over this and looking at this, I'd like to request that administration looks at this before it goes into the package, because, you know, we did establish a precedence last year that the contracts would be signed by the chief procurement officer, which happens to be the town administrator, as well as the finance director, before we put our ink on it. And that, Sean, I think I did see a separate, a separate packet maybe added later. But there was no information, and it wasn't signed by the two key people that put the contract together. So we're being asked to sign something tonight that's completely incomplete. And I won't be doing that this year. Contracts are either going to be right, or I'm going to vote against them.
Go ahead, Don.
And Madam Chair, if I might, it's probably not a good idea to spend $700,000 on the consent agenda. I mean, it deserves its own discussion. So that, that's maybe on us, but our, the way this was put out there is something where big contracts licenses shouldn't be on the consent agenda.
So just to be clear, we just wanted it to be complete vetting before we sign, so.
And just for the general public that may be watching, there's about $800,000 available in this contract with $698. So there is sufficient funds. We'll just get that additional material and have that on for the 11th.
Have it on next week on the 11th.
Still, we sign it.
Okay, next, again, another comment. Sacquet could have a septic system change order number two. Chris, do you want to?
Yes, on this item, Madam Chair, we do have a couple, we're still working on it, so I would ask that this be held over until the 11th. What we're working on, just so, there's two things. Approve $70,000 for the enhanced, not the enhanced, the septic field. We knew we were going to hold off on that. We did have some discussion, and we did try to price out internally to see if we could do that. The bathroom for, the septic system for the bathroom at the garage. It comes to, comes to be, it's going to be same, similar dollars. So we'd rather have the contractor that's going to plug it in to the overall septic do the work. So we will be bringing that back. We were not successful in having that come down. And Bob Cafrelli, the town engineer, is in the process of making a few final tweaks. So we're just trying to get those numbers. But it is consistent with what we've had in the past in terms of that. And it is CC Construction, or CC Cape Cod Builders, that I think is doing the work for us.
Thank you. And I actually took that out of order, I apologize, because I skipped over the Treasure Chest sticker parking. So. Thank you, Link.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Link Hooper, DPW Director. If I may, just take one moment. Under your consent agenda, I wanted to point out that item E, the moving of those poles, is the last component that I wanted to do out at the intersection of Route 39 and Pleasant Bay, to move those three poles, not the one right on the intersection, but if you're coming from like Chatham Bars Inn, looking left, you'll see three poles right in the way. They still kind of present, you're either behind them or in front of them, they're all lined up. Those are the poles that are getting moved, and hopefully, we won't have to build a roundabout.
No, that's great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Tuesday, after Memorial Day, I had Treasure Chest Chairman come in and advise me how busy they were. I've known that the volume has been increasing over there. I know that my staff has advised me on numerous occasions that the 15-yard roll-off is getting overfilled, and there's other places. Quite frankly, other treasure chests, or other swap shops, the town of Dennis in particular, has closed their facility indefinitely. Town of Brewster was closed, and I think they're on the cusp of just opening up. As a result of this, the word has got out that Harwich is an easy place to come and lend your stuff, to hopefully be reused. The reality of the situation is, we don't have the space, nor the volunteer staff, to deal with the volume that we're taking in at the, at this time. To address this, and it is not my normal MO to recommend something so quickly, as I did here, but we did a brainstorming session. And I would like to issue a Treasure Chest sticker. Having a, and I know it's almost counterintuitive. I was up here two years ago, and we abolished the stickers at the disposal area, which I think has been working out great. For the record, have higher, higher levels of compliance. Doing so didn't, wouldn't give volunteer staff at the Treasure Chest any inkling whether they were a resident and belonged at the disposal area or not. We kicked around, mowed around, possibly having traffic come by the scale house, but that presents its own set of problems as well. Logistically, it'd have to redo the parking lot, retrain everybody. And I didn't want to put an extra burden at a disposal area. If you go over there on a Saturday, right now, you'll see traffic backed up almost to Queen Anne Road, trying to get into the facility. It's nuts. It really is. We're doing over 2,000 vehicles a day, and this time of year, not even, you know, July 4th. So we thought if we issue a sticker free of charge to residents when they purchase their disposal area permit or their beach sticker, this would get, and they put them on their vehicles, we could have volunteers monitor the in-stream at the gate coming in. And if people have a sticker, then they go about their business. If they don't have a sticker, they'll be told to go down to the treasurer's office or the community center where stickers are sold, and they get them free of charge. If they've already, I just spoke to Amy, and unfortunately, Amy was on vacation last week, the treasurer. I spoke to her staff before making this recommendation to you, and she is on board with that. The burden primarily falls on them, because we want the registration number written down on the sticker, so people wouldn't be able to pass a sticker along. Certainly, there's going to be some pitfalls, but I think something has to be done. There is a cost associated with the stickers. However, my personal feeling is that cost would be more an offset by restricting the amount of stuff that we're actually disposing of these days. So I know this, it's, it's kind of seat of the pants recommending this. It's been kind of long-term coming. I believe the Board of Selectmen, when we were here March-ish, we were talking about the Treasure Chest, where you adopted a new charge for them, and they shared some new rules they've developed. I'd like to point out that I think Tom Caruso, as chairman, along with the rest of the committee members, really, I think, had a major impact on the culture there. The level of complaints that I'm getting has decreased almost nothing. And it really, obviously, it's a work in progress. But they feel like they could work with this system, that if we had stickers, they could better monitor who's supposed to be there. And the town of Dennis residents are going to have to find another avenue for their recyclable items.
Do we have any idea, Link, how much the sticker cost will be?
A roll of 5,000 is $1,000. That's $20 a sticker. I'd like to point out that when I ran this, before I put pen to paper, so to speak, I ran this by the administrator, and his thought was to charge like a dollar or $5, which I think would be totally appropriate. However, given the board's policy of having a fee hearing for any new fee instituted, I couldn't get this in place by July 1, which was the goal, to coincide with the issuance of all the other stickers we do in town.
Okay.
Just, for the cost of the sticker, you said $20 each?
No, sir, the $0.20.
I think you misspoke.
He did say $20.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry. It's $1,000.
It's gold-plated.
It's, it's $1,000 for a roll of 5,000 to be made up.
I did the math, I wasn't going to call you out.
What was I trying to call him up? It's $0.20 versus $20 is significant. Sorry.
Apologize for that. It was $0.20 a piece is the actual cost of it.
Okay, thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Link is right, we normally, process-wise, want to start with the idea and then go to the committee and have the committee in an open meeting vote to recommend to the Board of Selectmen. Then the Selectmen would have an item where they would advertise it to the public. But as long as there's no cost, I'd be for the sticker right now, I'd be in for that. But I kind of question you, that $0.20 doesn't get you to the point of what the cost of the sticker is, because Amy's office has to issue one, there's stuff involved with that, too. But the question I have beyond that is, some of the transfer requests, I hate to call it sticker, because it's not anymore, but when you, when you get a valid transfer station access for the year, you can do it online.
Yes, sir.
And nothing gets mailed back to you, because you have the electronic system. We're not going to put an electronic system gate for the Treasure Chest, at least right now. How would that work? I mean, you're presuming then that people that are doing it online and/or have a second car would come into Amy's office physically then, and just get that sticker?
Just like they acquire a beach sticker.
Okay.
No, no difference. Mr. Hall, you bring up an excellent point. My, my primary goal was to make life easy on residents by getting rid of the physical sticker, which then allowed a complete online transaction, which Amy's been promulgating and trying to prop up and get more people to do that. We haven't figured out how to do that with beach stickers yet. I think that should be coming, but this would be handled just like a beach sticker.
I just wanted the public to know that, so. I mean, I'd support this, if only because of the trash. But I will caution before anybody starts getting crazy over, well, we got a lot of trash, and we keep throwing it away when it comes in, because it's overwhelming us. We don't do paper throw on our regular trash. So when you get that sticker, you could bump up your quantity, because you're not going to, conceivably, to the Treasure Chest, you just throw everything away. We don't have a control system for what goes through persons' cars to the transfer station. So I'm not overly concerned about stuff that gets tossed away in the back, as long as it's coming from our residents.
Understood.
Ed?
I notice on the sticker that you provided, it's for FY 2019. And, and that makes sense for like beach stickers, because we charge that fee. We charge a fee every year, so you want to know whether they've bought their sticker for the year. But there's no fee involved in this. And it seems to me, if we're just, if we're going to issue it to a resident for a transfer station, it'll be good this year, next year, and the following year. And it would minimize the amount of times people have to actually go and get a new sticker to the, basically, to the point where they've sold their car and have a new car.
I believe the intent would be, in subsequent years, to recoup at least the cost and the transaction cost, which would probably be a dollar or two or something, or probably even as much as $5 in subsequent years. We'd like this to coincide with everything else we do on the fiscal year, honestly. If, if the intent was to just do this once, which I would advise against, because things change in people's lives, they come and go, new vehicles and so forth, this would be handled in sticker tracker the same way everything else is, to ver, to verify residency. So it's not just, we're just handing these out, hey, do you live in Harwich? The people that sell the stickers are going to be monitoring this with the same stipulations they do to purchase a disposal area permit of beach sticker, except there's no cost this year.
There you go. Michael?
I move we approve the Treasure Chest sticker parking as, as presented by the DPW Director.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead.
If we could just say that would be for FY 19 at no cost.
For FY 19 at no cost.
Second. I mean, I'd give that deal even by the way. Well, just.
Do you want any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, the poppers make a motion to have a discussion anyway, so we're, that's appropriate. Just a comment, Link. I appreciate your comment that you're going to help out the first couple of weeks because you're expecting, and I would suspect there'll be some angry people from off Harvard that are going to want to get there, so. I'm glad you're doing that, giving some aid to take some of that pressure off of people coming in. Now, are you going to, you keep track of our neighboring communities, Dennis and so on. If they come back online, will you expect this to continue or will our traffic will?
I think if this is adopted, I think we should probably stick with this to monitor. Quite frankly, the Treasure Chest is a victim of its own success. They have grown through the years. The word has got out on the street that it's a good place to go shopping as well as a good place to leave anything that town of Dennis or Yarmouth or whoever may not accept. Because the volunteers have been overwhelmed. They try to monitor. We have a giant new sign of unacceptable items that is posted. And they do their very best to monitor the waste stream, what's coming in, and make sure that what's coming in, somebody's probably going to take. Unfortunately, with the volume that's coming in primarily from other towns because their swap shops have either diminished or closed, I think we'll probably stay with some system that allows them an easy way to determine who belongs and who doesn't.
Thank you, Link. Just one other thing, Madam Chair, is that the original concept of this was to delete things from the trash stream. It may have morphed into also being a swap meet of sorts. And that was a nice secondary benefit, but if we stay focused on we have trucks going to CMASS and it costs us money to put them in there, then anything we can not have on that truck is a good thing. So it was always about our trash stream. So if it's about our residents being the people who access that, then I don't see anything wrong with this. It's getting us back to the roots of what it was.
An overall possibly cost, you know, a reduction in overall cost, so that's a positive. And I think to the point of, originally, I was thinking, you know, what Ed was saying in terms of the sticker would make sense. However, if you do, to your point, have somebody move out of town, come next year, they would have a sticker that was good endlessly, so.
Just one of the same, Madam Chair, that in conversation with Lincoln, you know, I think that we need to advertise a little bit that there are a lot of charities out there that will go to people's homes, that will pick up materials. So if there is something that you want to dispose of, you know, there are several options. And maybe we could do a little bit of an education campaign to try to diminish the amount of material coming in. Because if we do have to bring it to the, you know, recycling, or not recycle it, but to the trash, CMASS, that costs money, so.
Yeah, a lot of money, so.
Madam Chair, I believe that we would have something, if not this weekend, at the Treasure Chest. The following weekend that we'd plan out would have some materials as the administrator suggested. With some alternatives for those that, you know, do not live in town.
Okay. And you'll have, obviously, you'll have the police officer on hand to direct traffic initially for those first couple of weeks, which I agree with Larry. I think that's a great idea, you know.
That's correct. I don't, people are much less apt to give a volunteer a problem if there's a uniformed officer standing there.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, so we've had moved and seconded. Okay, so.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Just a quick comment, if I may. Thank you, Tom. You've done a great job. We did have a detailed conversation about the changes that were going to be made down there. By all accounts, they've all been made. And we did have a detailed conversation about making it for Howard residents only at that time. And I think that this is really a no-brainer.
Yeah. Ed?
You know, I understand the staff's wanting to get this in place at the beginning of the fiscal year. And the problem is that our policy has with being able to act on things quickly. But, you know, at times, in terms of fees, there are things that we have to act quickly on in the future rather than, because in essence, we voted in a system that anticipates enacting a fee in the future. And I would have felt entirely a lot more comfortable with, given the time pressures and the importance of doing this now, that we just simply would have voted to suspend our rule on that fee process to establish a dollar fee from the get-go rather than putting it off a year.
But here we are.
But here we are. And we voted.
Sometimes our rules don't fit every situation, and a vote to suspend is not entirely inappropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Link.
So we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, C U S E P A Southern New England Estuaries Project Grant Program Letter of Commitment. And Kristy, you want to speak to this or Larry, did you?
Chris, I mean, it's very short. I think Carol.
I thought Carol might be here, but.
Well, Carol mentioned this a couple of weeks ago when she brought in all the other documentation. And we're always asking folks, department heads and others, to seek grant funding. You've read this. This is simply a support letter for applications she's making to receive grants to help with the Pleasant Bay Alliance work going forward. So I would strongly support our approval of this.
And we would be the first watershed permit. Go ahead, Don.
I'd be supportive, but I would, Madam Chair, I would comment that that's not entirely true because if we do get the grant, we'd be expected to secure the money from town meeting. We can't say that we would and not do that.
Right. But the, excuse me, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, actually, I was going to make that point. She saw your hand first, so she went to you. But to that, and she's pretty careful in the letter that accordingly, the town of Howard is committing in-kind professional staff support. And then also, in addition to the staff support, to request Selectmen approved and town meeting appropriation to provide the portion of the cash match. Because obviously, we are one of the four partners, but there's also a level of contribution of nitrogen. So is it just one out of four or is it the percentage of contribution? So I think some details need to be worked out for what level would be sought at a town meeting appropriation.
Yeah, excuse me, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, you go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say that, and that's a good point. My understanding is that these are costs that we'll have to pay for. So we're seeking help on costs to reduce our, reduce our portion of the costs, so.
I don't read that letter as this is free at all, and I think we need a further explanation. I think the in-kind, I think, Chris, we've committed to our CWMP. And I guess my question would be to our consultant, is this consistent with what we're already doing or is it in addition to? And town meeting appropriation, I think that the way the letter reads, it does not read to me that we're just going to ask for authorization to use a grant at town meeting. I'd like a further explanation.
Well, the only thing on that, I don't disagree, and I wish Carol was here to kind of explain it, but the application is due in on June 8th. So the reason why I was on this agenda was to try to be able to get in. And, you know, that paragraph does specifically say, in addition, subject to Board of Selectmen approval and town meeting appropriation, the town will provide a cash match needed to conduct ecosystem monitoring and modeling.
Cash match to what?
It has in here the cash match, subject to town meeting approval, it would be $250,000 split four ways.
Let me, uh.
To what?
That's a good point. Let me just, let me state that, you know, this is part of our CWMP in the sense that the CWMP was our application to meet the EPA and DEP 208 plan requirements. And part of the requirements is, is that we would determine a way to show that we're meeting our nitrogen reduction goals. And that's what this Pleasant Bay Alliance does in terms of bringing people in and forming off, agreeing to what percent of nitrogen we're going to put, that we now are putting into Pleasant Bay watershed, what the commitments are of the towns, so we can get this so-called watershed permit. Otherwise, the CWMP fails. We don't get credit for that through there. And this then is part of the cost to take that action required as part of the CWMP 208, 208 requirement. So my read of this is, and is that we have to spend this money. What we're asking for is some grant might help us pay this money. I think that Carol's been careful to give us a way out that is, the town can overrule this if it doesn't get voted on at town meeting. And so I would say this requirement, CWMP, we do have a way out, but this is a way to help pay those costs from some state funds that are available to us.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I kind of agree with that if this grant existed when we requested approval of the CWMP. But it didn't. I mean, I'm not sure, absent the scope of work, which it doesn't have in what we've got here, I'm not sure what the $250,000 goes to specifically. In concept, overall, managing the nitrogen in Pleasant Bay is an important issue. But this particular grant wasn't around when the CWMP approval was sought. And I'm not sure what the scope of work is. So we could, in theory, just approve it and kick the can down the road and say, all right, let her put in for it. And if town meeting doesn't approve it, then so be it. But it would be real nice to know what it was for, not just in general, but what it was for specifically.
I read this and I, and my understanding was that it was for monitoring and for other things that were already under the CWMP, to Larry's point, that things that we were already going to have to pay for and that this was a grant to seek to defray those costs. And again, to that point, that they would have to be accepted at town meeting as well, but as the board.
But we're all sitting here speculating on what it means.
So the pre-proposal, we are requesting approximately $270,000 from SNEP. There's a local match of 300, match of $366,000, which consists of in-kind staff time and technical support from the towns. So are we all saying clearly that that technical support is already paid for? Because this is a match that we're being asked to support because the grant's for 270 and the local match is for 366,000. That's my question. Without an answer, I'm a no vote.
Ed?
Larry, do you seem to be on the verge of a comment?
No, I have to admit, I don't quite understand why the local match is 366 or requesting 270.
Well, I think.
But I'd have to reread that.
It's, she's got the 250 and the 116, right?
Totals up to the 366.
Totals up to the 366. That's where those numbers are coming from.
Okay.
It says, there's a local match of 366, 366,000, which consists of an in-kind, of in-kind staff time, technical support from the towns, alliance and county, 116,000, and a proposed town appropriation, subject to town meeting approval, 250,000. In the final proposal, we expect the town appropriation portion to be about half what is in the pre-proposal and the request to SNEP may increase. So.
Think you just said it. I think, to me, it doesn't say that it's not going to cost us any money. So, but anyway, I've said my piece. You're not going to convince, you're not going to convince me based on.
I'm not trying to convince you. I think that ultimately, it's monies that are already being allocated in the CWMP. So we're looking for a grant to defray those costs. When Carol was here, she did say, overall, that this was a grant, that we would be the first to have this watershed permit. And so that's how I understood it. I do wish she was here to reiterate that.
And sequentially, you know, we did the, we lead the town, prepared the comprehensive wastewater management plan. We'd probably get too tied up in the letters, which then was approved by Cape Cod Commission, EPA and DEP. Now, if you, if you go back and read that approval, however, part of the commitment we made or they demanded of us is that we would develop a watershed permit for the Pleasant Bay towns. We've addressed this at least two different meetings where we agreed to the, what our percent of nitrogen was that we had to remove. And the towns agreed to that. Now, part of that agreement is, is that we, and it's going to cost money, we have to set up a monitoring, a system to monitor and show accountability that we're removing nitrogen that we say we're going to remove. And so my take on this is that we're going to have to spend money in this to help defray some of those costs from this grant.
So.
And I, you know, I think it would be more detailed, but we're still in the process of walking through this sequentially.
Ed, we have an impending deadline to, if we miss this.
And this is due tomorrow, but, or due in a couple of days. You know, the Cape Cod Commission, for instance, is still working on the exact monitoring program that will give us guidance through all the towns, but we know we're going to have to monitor. We know it costs money.
Okay, so, Ed?
Well, Ed, you know, the whole basis of the comprehensive wastewater plan is spreading the projects out over a number of phases over many years and monitoring and testing in the interim to ensure that either we are making the goals or we're not overshooting them. And the only way to do that is through the monitoring and analysis of those results to find out where we are. Otherwise, we're, I guess, pretty much stuck with doing everything we have in the plan to the maximum extent. There is some hope that with some of the other things we've done, like the Matty Creek Bridge and the Hope for things in.
Coldbrook.
Coldbrook, that will reduce what we, but if we don't do the testing, monitoring, we'll never know that.
Right. Okay, any further?
Yeah, just have a question. This may be lawyerly parsing, parsing kind of thing. The, matching the efforts of our employees to this really isn't going to move mountains here. So we're really talking about the 250, which may be less. But what it's asking for is not the 250,000. It's asking for our promise that we will seek that through a warrant article at town meeting. And to that extent, I'd be willing to make a motion that we support the grant request insofar as we will provide the in-kind staff time and that we will seek funding from town meeting via an article for the 250,000, not more than $250,000.
Second that?
Well, we have our portion of the 250.
Our portion of the 250. So it would be that we were, we're supporting the grant insofar as we are providing in-staff, in-kind staff time and our portion of the 250,000, not to exceed $250,000, by seeking approval for such sum at town meeting through an article.
Just as a suggestion, if the board's interested in that, I think the letter, if we just revise that third paragraph where it says, in addition, subject to the Board of Selectmen approval and the town meeting appropriation, to reword that. So the Board of Selectmen will seek funding from town meeting, will seek funding from town meeting as an appropriation.
The reason I put it, I said through a town article, and people can either second that or not, is that I really don't want to see this just tucked in to our budget as an appropriation. I want it freestanding so that it is nothing, it's very transparent, it's going to go to town meeting, and they have the opportunity to say yes or no as a single item. It's not that they have to vote for the whole budget and this is stuck somewhere in line item 2,000. It's not that they have to vote for the whole budget, and this is stuck somewhere in line item 2,000.
I think that's a good idea.
We could have it submitted as a capital article.
Yeah, but that'd be my point, that we will seek town meeting approval for a warrant article for our portion not to exceed 250,000.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify on that, the document that we're talking about, the 250,000 and the number values, that's actually an email to us, for our, our understanding. The letter follows that, it doesn't in fact, doesn't mention, doesn't give dollar figures. So your suggestion is, is in that paragraph, we just modify and say to cap that town meeting at 250,000.
That's why I'm putting it there, is because, I don't wanna see us saying.
Just wanna be, wanna be clear that, you know, we're talking about, maybe, I wanna be sure we're not talking about two different things, we have the explanation of how it's in the letter.
This limits our exposure by putting a number out there.
Okay, I'll second that then, it goes in the letter, just to cap.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Opposed.
All in favor, opposed.
Opposed, I, I'm an aye, yeah. Okay. So, next up is, sorry, the Fire Chief's Performance Evaluation. Chris, do you wanna?
So, just on that, Madam Chair, we did, or actually, administration per the employment contract with the Fire Chief has a requirement to sit down annually with the Fire Chief, go over the goals and objectives that he has, and then how he manages the department. Norm and I have worked together for the entire time I've been here, I, I think Norm does a, an outstanding job by the document itself and by his contract, he is eligible if he receives a satisfactory score of a 2% cost of living adjustment per a, and also an economic adjustment because the position is underpaid compared to his comparison towns. So he received a, and I did the scoring, he needed a minimum of a 65, he received an 87, so a favorable score, so it was my recommendation, which the board approved in executive session, to agree with that, that he is eligible for that increase, which will go into effect on July first of 2018 for FY19.
Thank you. And items E through H, we are revisiting next week on 6/11/18.
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to comment on D.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to publicly thank Norm Clark, I did also in executive session. Norm is a department head that is very, very involved in this community, lives in this community, is at every, almost every event that we have, and we're very fortunate to have him as our Fire Chief. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you. Okay, on to I, Appointment of Members to the Affordable Housing Trust. Chris, do you wanna?
So, thank you, Madam Chair, I think I had brought this up, and it wasn't formally on the agenda, so I wanted to just recommend that it go formally on the agenda so we could talk about it. But in discussion with our town attorney, what will happen is in the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust, it's basically a document, a legal document that's put together, and then just filed at the registry of deeds, and in order to have the trust, you need to have actual people. So there has to be names that are associated with it. So I had indicated, and, and obviously will continue, the commitment that, I think in the language it has the administrator or designee, for the, I think for the first couple of years, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to go on there personally to help, so I would recommend the board appoint Christopher Clark as the town administrator for that appointment, and then maybe you have a discussion in terms of if a member of the board of selectmen is interested in, in stepping forth and considering being on that, and then really a, a just kind of additional notice to the community, and I would imagine that the interview committee probably would wanna vet through people, but to see if there are members in the community that would be on there for the at-large positions, I think that's what we call them.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm pretty sure most people would, but I'm, I mean, I'd be, I'd be more than willing to, to be on this, but only there's cer, one circumstance, I think if whoever it is from the board gets put on there, that there, there needs to be turnover. And whether that's one year, two years, or three years, I mean, I would suggest maybe in the beginning, one year, just to see how it works, because the board itself turns over, and we should probably view this like a liaison position, that we revisit it each year and decide what we wanna do, so that we don't have one member of the board who just becomes identified as the housing person.
Yep, go ahead, Ed, do you have any comment?
That's fine.
Okay, Michael?
I'm fine, and I, I'd take the seat either, either way, but I would support Don if he wants to be on.
I, I support Ethan Williams, as long as it's not me. I think I'm spending enough time on wastewater now.
Go ahead, Michael.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Don be the member, the selectman member to the housing, Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
For one year.
Yeah, to June 30th, 2019.
So, we've got a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Should we also follow up with the vote on Chris?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, because we have to make a motion to appoint Christopher Clark, Town Administrator, to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term not to exceed two years.
2020, June 30th, 2020.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then when we get for the, for item number three about members appointed by the board of selectmen, I think, you know, we, we've put it out there that people are interested, but I think, you know, Housing Committee at Bowdoin's done a lot of work on housing, and others who might be interested should, you know, let us know what, what type of interest they have, so. And any other members in the public who have that interest to contact the town administrator's office, and should be a standard, should it be the standard?
This is activity for a form?
The standard form, I think would be appropriate.
Okay, great. Okay, old business. Norm?
No old business.
Town Administrator's report.
I didn't have anything really prepared tonight, I just wanted to just kind of publicly, for the last two years, Michael's been the, the chairman that I've interacted with, and I know people may see and, or think that we didn't really have a great relationship, I thought we did okay, and we didn't always see eye to eye, but I appreciate that he was attentive and caring for the community, and I, I just think he served the community well for the, the two years that he was on, and just wanted to kind of publicly acknowledge the last meeting, we just kind of ended it a little bit quick, and just wanted to make sure I publicly said that as part of my administrative report.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Don?
Likewise, I thought we kind of pulled up stakes and moved out of town real quick last week, and it, we didn't have the opportunity, in the transition, Madam Chair's tenure here, to properly say thank you, because it was a hard job, a lot of stuff happening, tumultuous times, some would argue, and did an excellent job. You have my thanks, and I'm sure the rest of the boards.
Thank you.
Ed?
Well, as a new kid who has been experiencing some issues with the Wi-Fi connectivity of the building, could we have that looked at, because, you know, you go into other public buildings in this town, and you go and sign in on their guest Wi-Fi, and it comes up immediately. I come in every week and go to log on to the guest Wi-Fi here, and it takes 15 minutes to make the connection, and it's just, I think, for the use of everybody who comes in, people doing business with their laptops is more the standard than the exception, and we need to do a better job.
And he could take note that the new kid last year had the same comment.
Yeah.
No, my laptop works fine.
Because you have that super Apple thing.
So do I.
What are we talking about? Are we on to selectmen's report? Just a quick comment, I got to attend the Monomoy Regional High School graduation, there was, I think it was right around 70 kids that graduated, but it was, it was a, a great day, a little chilly in the tent, but the Thursday before, they did the, the scholarships, and Monomoy students received $338,000 worth of scholarships and a laptop, but it was a, it was a great event, and another plug for Principal Burkhead in my mind, he is, the, the way that the kids talked about him and the way that he bonded with the kids is, is notable, and he's a great principal, we're lucky to have him.
No comments.
So I would like to say, everybody took away what I was gonna say, so, but I'm gonna say it anyway, and it's not about a septic system.
Thank God.
I just wanted to thank Michael over the last two years, he's worked very hard, put in a lot of time and energy, and overall done a fantastic job for the town, and, you know, really has worked hard and proven his love for Harwich, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also just wanna remind people about our piping pullover situation at Red River, and to be respectful and work with Amy, who's done a fantastic job, along with Chris and our DPW, so that hopefully it'll be done and gone right around, right before the Fourth of July. I also wanna just say that we wanna make sure that the Housing Trust people understand it, that we're able to educate our public on it, and that, you know, we have the Housing Committee who's done a great job, we have the Harwich Housing Authority, we have, you know, a lot, a lot of people in town working hard, and we all know that now we have a new vehicle, and so hopefully we'll get people interested in, in attending and showing their interest in that board by filling out a volunteer sheet. Also, to Amy's point on the piping pullovers, if anyone's interested in volunteering to do the monitoring with the, prior to the raking, et cetera, that happens at the beach, if they'll contact the Conservation Department, that would be incredibly helpful as well. And another shout-out to Norm Clark, our fantastic Fire Chief, we're very lucky to have you, and glad that we could support everything in your contract.
In my exuberance to thank our prior chair, I didn't give a selectmen's report for the past week, but I was able to go to the ceremonies at the Fire Department on Friday, it's terrific to watch this. These people, whatever else people think is going on in the department, there's also a tight intergenerational Harwich flavor to all of this. It's Harwich kids who've grown up and wanna take on the responsibility, and they're kids' kids. It's an amazing department to see that people aspire to doing that from the time they're little kids, and then watch them get appointed and take on extra, ever-increasing responsibility is just phenomenal.
Thank you. Okay, Jordan?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sorry.
Second.
I'm with you, buddy, I'm with you. Wi-Fi is no-fi. Our Wi-Fi is no-fi.
That worked out for me, because I can't be here then.